Okay, I'm going to reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council. Is there any final report to make, City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No final action tonight.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the special meeting then and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council at 6:30 PM on April 13th, 2021. Please call the roll.
Council members Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalam Charla.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Here. And if everybody will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For those of you that are looking at the agenda, I'm going to ask for agenda updates in just a second, but we're going to take our scheduled presentations ahead tonight of the business from the floor. So anybody in the audience or on the line who would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda, we're actually going to do that after the scheduled presentations. So were there any agenda updates for tonight?
There are no agenda updates this evening.
Okay, great. Can we do our first scheduled presentation, which is Congressman Barra?
Yeah, your first item this evening, Mr. Mayor, is scheduled presentation item number one. This is a presentation from Congressman Ami Barra, M.D., regarding the federal government's COVID-19 relief package known as the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And Congressman, if you're ready, we have you on screen.
I am ready, and I think my staff has given you a couple slides, and I think you guys can control those slides if that's possible.
Congressman Barra, our clerk has the slides, and she's going to put them up when you give us a cue, okay? Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Well, first off, you know, I'm back here in Washington, DC, so it's a little later, 9:30 in the evening, so my apologies about the casual dress. But, you know, just again, thinking about this past year, that all of us in our community in Folsom, Sacramento County, and across the country, this is a challenging 12 to 14 months as we look back. And hopefully, as we come out of this pandemic, we can come out more resilient, stronger, and set ourselves up to recover as quickly as possible. You know, I know talking to all of you, city council members, as well as just so many families and small business owners, this has been incredibly difficult year. I can only empathize with the families that have young children that are school age, where they're trying to work remotely, educate their kids, et cetera. So there really is an urgency to get our community back to, you know, some semblance of what the new normal looks like, and certainly to get our kids in school. And, you know, again, my compliments to the members of the city council. Early on, going back to, you know, the early months of this pandemic, really emphasized the impact it was having on the Folsom community and the residents, the businesses there, and, you know, really emphasizing the lost tax revenue that would really impact the ability of all of you to serve the folks that you work for, the folks that I work for, our constituents. So, you know, going back to last May, we've been fighting hard to try to make up some of that lost revenue. And, you know, that really was the driving ideology behind the American Rescue Plan, was how could we, one, make sure we got vaccines out as quickly as possible, got personnel that could go out and deliver those vaccines, and really tried to put this pandemic in the rearview mirror. But at the same time, how could we get the resources to our school districts to get our kids back in school? You know, it's going to be hard to make up for the lost year that, you know, many of the children, you know, from kindergarten through 12th grade through college, you know, that lack of in-person learning opportunity. So how could we get our kids back in school, get those schools open in a safe manner, but also, you know, protect the teachers, the staff, and the families of those school kids? So again, a guiding principle there. And then the third value point in the American Rescue Plan was, you know, we've done what we can through the Paycheck Protection Program to try to get small businesses through the pandemic, but I don't think we've done enough. So extending some of the opportunities for those small businesses, not just to reopen, but to try to get back to where they were pre-pandemic. So if we can, let's go to some of the slides, and, you know, we can go through some of what Folsom and the Folsom community can expect out of the American Rescue Plan, and then I'm happy to take a couple questions. So we can take the first slide if we have it.
Okay, the first slide is ready for you.
Okay. And I'm going to see if I can actually see the first slide, so I can follow on. And I'm not sure that I can, so I don't have that first slide in front of me, but what I will say is that the big part of the first slide, and I think there's a first slide that has...
So what we had was a...
Second slide.
Yeah.
And the two big points are, there'll be about $15 million coming to Folsom, and that will be coming through, you know, some, it'll come through the state, but that money will come to Folsom, hopefully sooner than later. Half of it, you know, should come fairly quickly, and then the second half within the next 12 months. And I think that's incredibly important to, you know, we've tried to keep it less restricted and as open to the city council and the city of Folsom to direct those funds where they could be most impactful. The intent really was to help families, businesses, individuals hit hard by the pandemic, but also to think about how to use those resources to help lay the groundwork for the recovery component of this. So where do we want to go as we come out of the pandemic? Second component of it is the funding to the school districts, and the Folsom Cordova School District should be getting about $26 million roughly to, one, help the lost year of those kids. So some of it certainly can go into making sure our schools are safe. Some of it is going to go into, you know, the resources, that sort of bring our kids back up to speed. And some of it should be, again, planning for where we go from here. So those are, you know, again, I can't see the slides, so I'm not going to run through each of the components and the bullets on there. If you go to the second, third, and hopefully the viewers can see what's on those slides. Again, not a ton of restrictions, other than, you know, the intent really was to help those folks impacted by the pandemic and the businesses, families, individuals. So the one restriction was, and again, this doesn't really pertain to Folsom, because, again, you've done your budgeting and over the years in a consistently sound manner, but, you know, you can't use the funds to backfill, you know, pension obligations and so forth. But, again, that doesn't really pertain to the city of Folsom. So we've tried to, you know, construct this with maximum flexibility. Again, because, you know, my perspective and what I argued for was, you know, the cities actually know best how to use these resources for maximum impact to, again, get us back to where we were pre-pandemic, and hopefully, you know, even set us up to have a strong recovery as we come out of this. So I'll stop with that. Again, I appreciate the partnership I've had with the city council, with the mayor, as we, you know, struggled through these past 12 months. And again, you know, my hope is, you know, it does seem like there's light at the end of the tunnel. People are getting vaccinated, schools are opening up, and, you know, again, I hope sooner than later, we can get back to what feels like a normal life again. So I'll stop with that. I'm happy to take any questions from any of the council members.
Congressman Barra, this is Mike Kozlowski, the mayor, for the moment in Folsom. And I guess, Mike, first of all, let me say thank you for your leadership and for the partnership with your staff particularly, because they've done a great job of keeping us well-informed, as you have, and working directly with our city staff. So it's been terrific in that way, and as you said, I think there is a good shining light at the end of the tunnel. I would like to ask you, though, given that you're both our congressman and a medical doctor, do you have some advice in terms of as things open up, how to remain, how to take, how to continue safety precautions? Because not everybody will be vaccinated immediately. And just your personal advice on that account?
Yeah, so I'm going to put my doctor hat on and public health hat on. For the time being, let's continue to be cautious. We, you know, sacrificed over these last 12 months. I would continue, as you go out in public, particularly when you're indoors, to wear your face covering, practice good hygiene, you know, to the extent possible, the physical distancing, a little bit less of a risk when you're outdoors. Certainly when you get your vaccine, and, you know, we have three vaccines. I know there's some news about the Johnson-Johnson vaccine, but, again, you know, my sense is all three are actually very safe, and we know are very effective against the variants that we're seeing emerge out there. They're very effective at, you know, preventing serious illness, at keeping people out of the hospital, and certainly, you know, from folks that have been getting vaccinated, you're not seeing deaths from COVID-19. So very good vaccines. I would get whatever vaccine that you can get, and my expectation, we'll see what the CDC says about the Johnson-Johnson vaccine. But again, it's one, you know, from the data that I've looked at, I think is extremely safe and effective. My hope is that we get to, you know, 50% of our county and community and country vaccinated. You know, we're not seeing the hospitalization. We're certainly seeing continued high numbers of cases, but they're not in the folks that are particularly vulnerable. About 75% of older Americans who are more vulnerable to getting really sick, getting hospitalized and dying, have been vaccinated in this country. And I think that's consistent with what we've seen in Sacramento County. So, again, you're seeing relatively high case numbers, but you're not seeing the concomitant hospitalization and ICU admissions, et cetera. So now's not the time for us to let up, but now's the time for us to cautiously be optimistic, but continue to do at least for the next month, maybe two months, until we can get to critical mass. And I'm happy to see businesses starting to open up again, and folks, again, in a safe way, starting to get outdoors.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. My colleague, YK Chalam Charla, would like to ask a question.
Congressman Barra, good evening, and thank you for speaking to our council and the entire city. This is YK Chalam Charla. Once again, thank you so much.
I'd like to say goodbye, by the way, on your election.
Thank you, Dr. Barra. Thank you so much once again. I know, $15 million for Folsom, yes. We take, you know, every bit we get, you know, we are in need, and, you know, all the activities. And I just want to, you know, mention again the special thanks for giving us the funds for Folsom Cordova School Districts also, $26 million. Our kids well deserve those ones. Once again, thank you for representing us at Washington, DC, and great to see you.
Good to see you, YK, and to the entire council. Yeah, I think this is an opportunity, you know, for Folsom, which has been on a great trajectory. You know, if we're able to get an infrastructure bill passed, if we're able to get some of the surface transportation reorganization passed, I really do see a bright future for the region as we come out of this, but certainly for Folsom, because there's a lot of exciting things happening. You know, Sasa, Highway 50, you know, obviously, you know, brand-new developments, and, you know, a real opportunity for us to realize the full potential of this region.
Think Empire Ranch Interchange and the connector.
Working on it, working on it.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. One more question from Rosario Rodriguez.
Good evening, Congressman Barra. My name is Rosario Rodriguez, and I have a question about, like, next steps in recovering. Are there any talks about best practices or learned lesson from this COVID that in the event we go into another crisis sometime in the next couple of years, things that we would do different or do better so that our economy doesn't go into a crash mode?
Rosario, absolutely. And, you know, we're still trying to defeat COVID-19, but we absolutely are starting the process of doing the lookback, because we know we are going to have new viruses that, and we're seeing that with increased frequency. We can't go through this stop-and-start, you know. It's just been too painful for so many folks. And if I recall, Rosario, I think you're a restaurateur.
Correct, yes.
And, you know, we've had, and one of the things in the American Rescue Plan is actually some grant funding for restaurants, because they've particularly been hard hit, particularly women-owned restaurants and, you know, minority-owned restaurants. So if that's not something you've looked at, you know, certainly, you know, reach out to our office staff. We've got to make sure this doesn't happen again, so, you know, we've got to look at lessons learned. I think there were things that could have been done differently, you know, in terms of how we talk to the public, in terms of not shutting down everything and then opening up and then shutting down and opening up. So I think there's ways to do this better. And, you know, it's been 100 years since the last pandemic. I hope it's 100 more years or longer until the next pandemic, but we can't count on that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, Congressman Barra, once again, thank you very, very much for spending some time and providing some insight into your thoughts and the programs that are coming down the road.
Great. Well, I look forward to working with the city council, not just to put an end to this pandemic, but also to make sure we come out of it stronger, more resilient, and with a brighter future for all of us. So thank you again, and it's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Fantastic. Okay, well, have a good evening.
Be safe. Bye-bye.
Okay. Do you want to come back to your seat, or do you want to...
I'm going to close this down. For the next user. So your next item this evening will be a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of April as limb loss and limb difference awareness month in the city of Folsom. And Councilmember Chalam Charla will be presenting to Mr. Jim Wilks.
Mr. Wilks, I know, usually we hug and we shake hands, we all do all those. Thank you so much for being here, and my name is YK Chalam Charla, and thank you for all your services. Are you good, ma'am? I started a conversation here. So I'm going to read this great proclamation for you, and I wanted to make sure if you don't mind, you can hold this one, and that will be the proclamation. Thank you, everyone, for being here. This month has been the limb loss and limb difference. Mr. Wilks, amputee coalition certified via visitor and amputee coalition advocate. Will accept the proclamation of mayor of this city of Folsom proclaiming the month of April as a limb loss and limb difference awareness month in the city of Folsom. Can you guys hear me okay? Turn this side, right? Yep. Okay. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of April as a limb loss and limb difference awareness month in the city of Folsom. Whereas there is approximately 2.1 million Americans living with limb loss and limb difference, and over 500 Americans lose a limb every day, and whereas approximately 1,000 children are born each year in the United States with a continental limb difference, and approximately 600 children lose a limb to a lawn mower accidentally every summer. And whereas diabetes, peripheral vascular disease, and trauma are cited as the leading cause of amputation, and approximately 99% of the cases is being attributed to these types of diseases. And whereas studies have shown that diabetes management, properly treating wounded, and observing safety practices can be effective in preventing amputations. And whereas access to approximately posthetic cancer for people living in the limb loss is vital. To enable individuals to reach their full potential, live independently and live well. And whereas the amputee coalition provides education, support, and advocacy through the National Limb Loss Resources Center for the benefit of persons with the limb loss and limb difference, their families and their health providers throughout the United States. And whereas April is appropriate month to designate as a limb loss and limb difference awareness month, as spring is time for renewal and inspiration. Now, therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Michael D. Kozlowski, mayor of the Folsom, on behalf of our city council, do hereby, April 2021, this month, a national limb loss and limb difference awareness month, and encourage all of its residents to join in recognizing the importance of this month by celebrating people living with the limb loss and limb difference, learning about issues, attempting to the people with the limb loss, experiencing gratitude to families and caregivers who are a source of support and motivation, and saluting our veterans who have lost their limbs in service to the country. This proclamation on April 13th, the day of April 2021. I know, I stopped at one point, you know, getting my emotions there for all the services you are doing. Once again, you know, I'm going to do this. Thank you so much for all of this. If you'd like to take...
So I'll do it this way, it'd be easier. Thank you to the city of Folsom. It is an absolute pleasure to live in this city. This is the greatest city in America, in my opinion. As stated, the amputee coalition supports amputees throughout the United States. That is so important for amputees. I ran into a man just yesterday who was bitten by a dog, and now he's an amputee. And support is critical. A lot of people don't know about the coalition. I'm fortunate to have a great support group. As a matter of fact, I see some folks from my prosthetic clinic, Thrive Prosthetics. You may have seen their vans running around Folsom here. There are so many amputees in the city of Folsom. And I will tell you that, yes, 2.1 million Americans suffer from amputations, and was stated, 500 people a day. Can you imagine, 500 a day? What's even worse is there are 28 million people that are at risk because of diabetes. That is the number one, diabetes and vascular is the number one reason. Mine was trauma, and the third, of course, is cancer. So just how can I say thank you more than just thank you for your proclamation? I reached out a year ago to then-mayor Aquino, and she said absolutely. And the city stands behind what they say and their support. So thank you so much. On behalf of the coalition, I do accept this.
Awesome.
Oh, yes.
First of all, recognize it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
One other just mention about that, if you ever get the opportunity to visit the Shrine Hospital, they do amazing work for children who have amputations of one sort or another, or limb loss, or differences in their limbs. And as part of Folsom Youth Football, every year, there's kids selling tickets to the Shrine Football Game when it's a normal year. And that is specifically to help with that program at the Shrine Hospital. So support the, you can support youth football and take care of kids that have limb differences. Thank you.
Okay, your next item this evening is item number three. This is the Arbor Day Foundation's recognition of Folsom as a 2020 Tree City USA and a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day.
And if Amy will join me down there. Amy is our city arborist. Welcome, my dear. So this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas in 1907, President Theodore Roosevelt proclaimed this as a national time to plant trees. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and will be celebrated in Folsom on Saturday, April 24th. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, hot heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature citywide, catch rainwater, clean the air, reduce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and protect us from the harmful effects of the sun on our skin. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes and furniture, and sequestering air and soil-borne carbon. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas we can, we will be celebrating spreading mulch onto the two Landmark Valley oak trees at Pruitt Park in celebration of Arbor Day. Now, I, Carrie Howell, on behalf of Mayor Michael Kozlowski, do hereby proclaim April 24th as Arbor Day in the city of Folsom, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, planting a tree of their own, or joining in our city Arbor Day event. And further, I encourage all citizens to enjoy the cool shade of trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations as Folsom becomes a tree city USA for the 15th year in a row, and celebrate the 2020 Tree City USA Growth Award as bestowed by the Arbor Day Foundation. Proclaim this 13-day, 13th day of April, 2021.
I just want to say thank you so much, Councilmember Howell, Mary Kozlowski, and fellow members of the council, for your past and continued support of both staffs and this community's...
I was given a prop.
Thank you for your support in our efforts to continuously strengthen the vibrancy of our urban forest. And before I touch on Arbor Day, I do want to touch on the fact that those efforts and your support have not gone unnoticed, as we were just awarded the 2020 Growth Award by the Arbor Day Foundation. So thank you so much for everything that this council has done to support us in our recent update of the tree preservation ordinance, in our recent endeavors to initiate in a tree inventory by the Parks Department, and also for brokering a new partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation to utilize the city's mitigation funds to plant trees in city open spaces.
So where is the mayor going to plant that tree?
Well, I suspect it will go into my own yard, because it is very valuable and unique. Should I tell the story?
Oh, please.
Okay. So one of the people in the audience, who is also an arborist, Janine Ferrer, brought this in to me and explained that there was a willow tree that somebody observed had a branch that was an unusual branch that had particularly golden bark, and they took a cutting of it and tried to propagate it and clone it. And now there are at least 150 of these growing in the world. So this is, this is one of the, one of the new growing trees that are special to our town.
That is phenomenal. I also want to point out that we are going to have some very exciting tree planting projects coming up this fall, so I hope you all stay tuned. Maybe we can find a place for Folsom's Gold, Salix. But, so, as we celebrate fifteen years as a Tree City USA and Arbor Day, I hope you all will celebrate with me Saturday, April twenty-fourth by helping us care for two of our most remarkable landmark oak trees located in the open space on Pruitt Drive just across the street from Kids Play Park. We are going to be spreading eighty yards of mulch, so all help is appreciated. And if you are interested in joining the cause, I encourage you to reach out to our project coordinator. Her name is Kimberly Boyle, and you can email her at kimberly@sactree.com. So thank you so much again, and I hope to see some of you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, Amy. Thank you. Okay, sticking with our tree theme.
Your next item is item number four, Presentation on Ladder Fuel and Weed Abatement Practices.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, Lorraine Pajoni, your Parks and Rec Director. Before we get into the ladder fuel and weed abatement process and kind of on the heels of the great news of our arbor wealth here in Folsom, I was asked to also discuss kind of one of, one of the more disturbing pests that we have in Folsom. And it's a really brief presentation just to explain kind of our practices regarding mistletoe. This is an item that does come up frequently throughout the year. I wanted to explain that there are a little over a thousand different species in mistletoe, two common species in Folsom, so the ones that you see technically are mostly in oak trees and the ones you see in the ornamental trees like pears. Mistletoe is not always detrimental, and we do get kind of panic calls throughout the year of us, you know, of people being concerned about mistletoe. And we do understand that, but often they can coexist with a tree, not necessarily fatal. And it does indeed spread from tree to tree by birds which feed on the seeds and then deposit them on their, on their nearby, other nearby trees. But the management for us right now in Folsom is basically on a case-by-case basis. So if someone does bring to our attention there is some mistletoe in a tree, we will evaluate it in terms of the type of tree it is, because sometimes it's in a grand oak that should be cared for carefully, and that would be one that we would address more aggressively. Sometimes it's in a pear, sometimes it's in an ornamental tree that we may decide that the, the tree, you know, that would be a time to replace the tree as well.
Can we just make note that that particular mistletoe is not actually in the City of Folsom? That's in a national park somewhere, maybe Yosemite.
Oh, gee, the backdrop's a little, you're right, it was not, it was not a Folsom-
There's a waterfall, it's not here.
That's wild alpine mistletoe.
That is the Christmas tree, so the, the fun things we used to make for our, our Christmas mistletoe in, around the holidays, that is, that is the species of that. We also, and this really is something that Amy has, has perfected really well out of, out of her role as our arborist and out of the Community Development Department, because people often call us and notice it in, on private property, not on public trees, they've put together a flyer that educates the owner about what they can do to manage it and how they can, how they can proceed with taking care of it with a certified arborist. Ultimately, we'd like to work with the Sactree Foundation to prepare an urban, an urban forest management plan, which the city doesn't have yet. We are, as Amy mentioned, we're putting together an inventory right now of our trees, and that will be a great database to start with that. So that is one of the things we're looking forward to there. So that concludes my, my, my brief presentation on, on mistletoe in advance of our, our next presentation on ladder fuel and weed abatement.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council by chance?
I do, because I have one resident in particular who is regularly contacting me about mistletoe. I don't know anything about it, so I take your word when you say that it's, you know, sometimes a tree and a mistletoe can, can coexist. But because it sounds like it is spread from, you know, bird to, it seems like if we were more aggressive, at the very least, it would keep it from spreading to new trees. Is that correct?
Yes, that would definitely help. I think what, what the, probably the biggest hurdle is, is just the enormity of that. And it's, I remember when we started kind of trying to game plan how we would address it, it would have to be one of those very united front, you know, the city's going to address their, their mistletoe over these months, and we'd like the private entities to address it. It needs to be fairly comprehensive because just grabbing it from one or two trees probably isn't going to do it. You might think that your eye view of let's grab all these and get the mistletoe out, but then it'll come from somewhere else. So it's, it, it can be a-
So if we really wanted to make a dent, we'd have, we need more staff, more funds dedicated to it.
And make it kind of a, a public outreach effort. So, okay.
Well, and we'd need homeowners to be good neighbors and remove it from their own trees because there's at least as many trees in all of our personal yards as there are in the city forest lands.
Yep. Any other questions on?
Excellent. Thank you very much. I, I asked for the mistletoe discussion because somebody brought it to my attention, and Lorraine very generously spent a solid hour and a half with me telling me the full and complete story of mistletoe. And I thought a synopsis would fit nicely into our tree-themed meeting. Thank you.
My pleasure. All right, now to the real show here. Tonight, we'd like to explain our ladder fuel and weed abatement processes and practices. With me tonight is Ken Casano, your Fire Chief, Lauren Ono, and Zach Paris. Zach Paris is in Parks and Rec, and Lauren is with the Fire Department. Collaboratively, we work together to address the city's ladder fuel and weed abatement. Most of the activity that occurs for ladder fuel and weed abatement is managed by the Parks and Rec Department. We manage the open space areas, of which we have a little over a thousand acres on this side of fifty. We'll have another thousand on, in the Folsom Plan area. And we collaboratively work with our Fire Department because there's fire ratings, there's risk factors, and that's what helps us prioritize how and, and what we do to address this. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Lauren first, and then she'll turn it over to Zach.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lauren Ono, Deputy Fire Marshal for the Fire Department. So the Fire Department and Parks and Recreation Department came together to create a fire hazard rating system for all the city-owned properties. With that, we look at six key indicators to determine where they fit on our rating The first thing that we look at is the wooey threat to structures, which is the wildland urban interface, and that's just the area where it goes from developed property to natural areas. The second thing we look at for each property that the city has is the fire history. Has there been a fire there before and what was the cause? Also, our emergency vehicle access. Where can we park next to the parcels? And can we drive through it or in it? We also look at the fire spread potential, and so that includes the topography as well as the fuel. So the, is it made up of weeds, annual grasses, or trees? The population use, is it an occupiable space such as has parks or trails? And how close it is to adjacent homes and businesses? So with that, again, every property that the city owns, we give it a fire risk value, and we calculate how many of those items that it meets. And we also give it a hazard rating from one to three, three being the most concerning. After we've done that for every property, we hand it back over to Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is Zachary Paris. I am your Municipal Landscape Services Manager here at the City of Folsom. And we work annually with the Fire Department to come up with these ratings, and then really our role in this is to kind of carry out what the Fire Department lays out for us. So a little bit about our methodology. This kind of model started back in 2017, where we were trying to look at our areas holistically, come up with the rating system, and figure out how we can prioritize based on urgency. Like Lauren said, there's six factors. Based on those factors, we prioritize the different areas, and then we use that to kind of guide our work for that season. So based on these, when it comes to ladder fuel, we have it broke up, broken up into three phases. With weed abatement, we do that annually, it's for annual grasses. Ladder fuel is a bit different approach just because you're not just addressing the annual grasses, there's also the limbing up of trees and things of that nature. And so we do that typically, we plan to do it on a three-year rotation, and then once we get that implemented, we can kind of course correct from there if necessary. So obviously, our goal is to accomplish one phase per year, and that's kind of establishing that three-year rotation. The first year in each phase would have a significant amount of work because we're going into an area that's, that's currently native. We haven't done work there in the past. And so once we establish these fuel breaks and eliminate the ladder fuels, those concurrent years after, you know, theoretically should have less work because we've established those breaks. This is a map of the three phases that we have here. So obviously, phase one is in red, phase two is in purple, and phase three is in blue. Obvious areas all over town. This map specifically is just north of fifty because we have just recently accepted our first open space south of fifty. When we accept open spaces south of fifty, it is the current landowner's responsibility to implement their fuel modification plan for that current year, and then we would pick up the, the successive year. So no implementation south of fifty this year. And this is kind of what we have laid out and how we would like to move forward. Generally speaking, ladder fuels are any combustible materials that could facilitate the spread of ground and surface fires into tree canopies resulting in crown fires. So this is two pictures of the same site, obviously, kind of like Carrie said with the previous slide, not in Folsom, but it's a good example showing that physical separation that we're trying to achieve between low-lying grasses and tree canopies. This picture was taken in Folsom, this was in American River Canyon. This is an area that we utilize goat herds. It's a contiguous area, all annual grasses, no protected trees, things like that. So that's a prime example of a area we could use grazing rather than manual removal. So methods of treatment, manual removal, really that consists of, you know, contractors, city employees, Cal Fire using weed eaters, chainsaws, things of that nature. Managed grazing is something that we started in 2018. We've been trying to grow it year after year and finding more areas that we can cordon off, make sure that we're protecting protected trees, but kind of leverage their ability, they don't take weekends off and, you know.
They are remarkably effective.
They are, and, you know.
And quick at their work, too.
Yeah, and when you use a line trimmer, the combustible material's still left on site, whereas, you know, a goat processes that material and leaves it not as grass. So, you know, Folsom is a unique area, so a lot of our open spaces aren't just undeveloped properties, a lot of them are California Department of Fish and Wildlife jurisdictional habitat. So that does create a little bit of a hurdle for us when we're trying to do ladder fuel work. So it really gives us a time window from October first to February fourteenth to get in there and do our work because that's outside of breeding season. So if we want to work outside of those seasons within jurisdictional areas, we would pretty much have to work under a permit. And typically, you would have to have a biologist on site to be able to observe any protected species and, and make sure that the work that's being conducted doesn't have any adverse effects. We do work with Cal Fire frequently. Right now, they're doing some work for us. It is their time to kind of get ramping up for the fire season, and so they don't have a consistent schedule with the city, but when they are available, we try to utilize them as much as possible. Here's another map. So just some metrics. We have three hundred and thirty-five acres of ladder fuel area, two hundred and forty-five of those acres land in general fund areas managed by Parks Maintenance, ninety acres land within our lighting and landscaping districts within town, and those districts are responsible for their open spaces. As far as weed abatement is concerned, we do three hundred and one acres a year of weed abatement, and then a similar sort of breakdown there. Hundred and seven, a hundred and seventy-seven of those acres are in the general fund Parks Division areas, and then a hundred and twenty-four acres are within the landscaping and lighting districts. We do have a metric there, seven hundred and ninety-two acres of HOA privately-owned property and non-city-owned property. I put a caveat on that number just because these are full parcel areas, whereas in some applications, if we have an area that the full parcel doesn't need to be abated to achieve the hundred foot from structure tolerance, we would only do work to that extent. We wouldn't abate an entire parcel if it's not contiguous to a structure, there's no threat beyond getting that physical distance there. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear with the information you guys are seeing here. Touched on this a little bit earlier, so in the Folsom Plan area, we have roughly a thousand acres of open space. They're broken up into two categories, passive recreation, open space, and conservation areas. So conservation areas have a conservation easement overlay over that property, which it pretty much prohibits certain activities for the, for the majority of the year. Passive recreation areas is, is kind of like what we have on this side of fifty, right? So outside of the jurisdictional habitat with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, most of our areas are, are open for use, whereas conservation areas south of fifty have been set aside for conservation and for sensitive habitat and species. To date, we've accepted thirty-eight acres of open space in the Russell Ranch area in the Folsom Plan area. And kind of like I said before, when privately owned, it's that landowner's obligation to implement their fuel modification plan, and then upon dedication to the city, that's when we would take over. So we have been working on a FEMA grant for quite some time now. So we had applied back in May of 2018 under Chief Rodriguez in response to the 2017 fire season. Obviously, as we're all aware, since we've had even, you know, worse fire seasons that we're, we're still trying to make sure we're following through on this. So the grant would be for five hundred thousand dollars over three years with our obligation to match twenty-five percent. So you can see, they would provide three hundred and seventy-five thousand, we would have to make up the other hundred and twenty-five thousand. When I did the slideshow, they were conducting biological surveys, those have since been completed. FEMA is currently working with the, working to take that survey and kind of see how that intertwines with the Endangered Species Act to come up with conditions for the work that we're proposing to do. We've provided supplemental information, and we should be getting a final determination on the grant by this summer. Recent and future projects. So of the fourteen sites within Phase One, one of the highest priorities, Robert Zavine will receive ladder fuel work this month. It's actually happening currently, they're, they're doing work down there this week with Cal Fire. The next identified site, if funding is available through the grant, would be discussed, discussing coordinated with the Fire Department. But the next highest priority site using our rating system would be area northeast of Sibley and southwest of Lemby Park in the Folsom Heights or California Hills neighborhood. So kind of to wrap it up, we have over six hundred acres of weed abatement and ladder fuel areas, seven hundred acres of open space that aren't city-owned. Weed abatement is budgeted each year through L&Ls and the general fund, and ladder fuel projects are addressed through partnerships with Cal Fire and City Cruise. We can address any questions you all might have for us.
Okay. Any questions? YK?
Thank you. It's a very detailed, and any one or two things you can advise as everybody is listening to this, and, you know, we usually seldom to get more people into our thing. One or two advice, you know, coming summer season, the actions for the residents to take to avoid those ones. Thank you.
Sure, so I guess, you know, I may be speaking on behalf of the Fire Department here, but kind of like you saw with the metrics we had up there, the majority of, of property that, that is vacant and, and needing abatement is privately owned, it's not owned by the city. So I would just say, you know, when you hear from the Fire Department, if they send you a notice and they're trying to give you a heads up to protect your property and your neighbors, please heed the warning and, and do what you can. If you have questions, you can always reach out to me, you can reach out to the Fire Department, we'll always do our best to help out. But when public safety officials try to give you a heads up, I would just, you know, follow suit with that.
Thank you.
Officer Ono, anything to add to that? Or Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, Chief Casano, Fire Department. Now, I, I would just add that for those that have or that own properties in the city, you know, look at your, look at your property, and if you are up against a wooey or wildland-
We'll always do our best to help out, but when public safety officials try to give you a heads-up, I would just, you know, follow suit with that.
Thank you.
Officer Ono, anything to add to that? Or Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Chief Casano, Fire Department. Now, I would just add that for those that have or that own properties in the city, you know, look at your, look at your property and if you are up against a wooey, a wildland urban interface area, you know, part of the recommendation is to either harden your home in combination with doing your own vegetation management and making sure that you do have, you know, the fuels or the ladder fuels cleared, the grass is cut, and that's the biggest thing that can help you.
Thank you.
Very good.
I was going to make a comment that there are also many service organizations that are always looking for projects in the city to help out and that may be another avenue to get some of the help done. Personally, I love to see the cows on the prison grounds. That is my favorite time of the year.
Yeah. Very good. Carrie, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Sarah?
Well, first, a comment. Thank you. That was very interesting. I remember, I don't know, a year or two ago when we approved the, I think it was the emergency operations plan or something. I'm not exactly sure the official name for it, but when you're reading about all the possible emergency situations and natural disasters and stuff that could impact us, by far, the greatest was fire hazards. So, I'm very, very happy that there's a plan and at least for me personally, this is extremely high priority. My question is, and if you don't know the answer, that's okay. We're hearing about residents in Folsom who are starting to get non-renewals from their homeowners association or homeowners insurance because of fire danger. My husband and I got one a couple of years ago. We do not back up to open space, so we were a little bit surprised. We were able to get other coverage, but I'm just wondering, if a city has a plan like this and can demonstrate that we, you know, we are being proactive and managing these risks, will that eventually, does that help with the homeowners insurance? Do you know that or?
I could not tell you how that would affect your homeowners insurance. I could tell you that if you were having that conversation with your policyholder and that information would, you know, lend itself to help you out, we always make that sort of thing available. So, if they're looking for, you know, the contiguous city-owned property that's, you know, next to your home and what the plan is there, we could always help out and provide that information, but as far as the approach for an insurance company.
Yeah. I'll tip us some property and casualty agents on that because it would be interesting to know how those, how companies determine, you know, who is at high risk and who gets canceled.
Really valid point and we can research it on this end as well.
Okay.
And happy birthday to Chief Casano.
Oh, Chief Casano. Happy birthday.
Very good.
Happy birthday, Chief.
So, I will just add, thank you very much for the presentation. The, you know, when we went through the emergency plan, the fire department and the staff updated over the last couple of years that you mentioned, Sarah, it really, really drove home the point that fire danger is our biggest danger. And some of the seemingly mundane things that we do to try and provide public safety are cutting the branches below six feet and bringing the goats out and taking care of the grass. And it's often that people, when they think of public safety, they immediately think of ambulances and fire trucks and police cars, but this proactive work is absolutely an essential service that the city helps to provide and it only works and it's only effective if we all pitch in on our own yards and our own properties and do the same. So, thank you very, very much and thanks for letting us know what's happening at the fire department and the parks.
Thank you for the kind words. Thank you for having us.
Yeah. So, we are now going to do business from the floor as is normal, of course, if anybody in the audience or anybody that is on our phone call would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda. There are blue speaker cards that you can fill out so we know that you'd like to speak. One's on its way to Krista right now. We have a couple others and we'll have the clerk call the first person to the podium.
Okay. Our first speaker tonight will be Charlotte Brock and Charlotte will be followed by Muriel Bronstein.
Good evening, Mayor and C Council members and all the other city department people and the audience who is here. I am here to talk about HART. HART of Folsom is a nonprofit charity working exclusively in the city of Folsom to benefit those Folsom residents who are homeless or are at risk of becoming homeless. The acronym HART stands for H-A-R-T is Homeless Assistance Resource Team, if you didn't know that. And we are entering our fifth year in the Folsom community and we've just finished our fourth Folsom winter shelter where we provided sanctuary for 48 individuals over the course of 84 evenings. Some stayed every night, others just came occasionally and all who did attend were, did receive food, shelter, security, care from the volunteers whose only goal was to provide these services and more. Mentors were available to help the guests with information on getting identifications, benefits, housing, and county services. Showers and laundry was there for them every night that they could avail of and there were mentors available to help, you know, the guests get all of this information. And some may say that Folsom looked better those evenings with fewer people sleeping on the streets or in their cars. And I say that Folsom lived better those evenings. And also, there were some surveys done for the homeless individuals who did stay and here are some of the comments that they had. "Since this was the first time I had been in a shelter, I was amazed at the great amount of love, support, and care from everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to receive my vaccine, too." And here's another comment. "You allowed me to be a normal human being without having to be ridiculed or criticized for being homeless." And another one said, "Everything, the kindness and the patience exhibited by all the volunteers toward me." And, you know, in conclusion, the shelters are, they're good and they work out well and they do do important things for these people, hopefully, to support them and get them back to a better life. And I do want to express my thanks to all those who have volunteered and donated to the HART programs to help support the homelessness in our community. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your next speaker is Muriel Bronstein, who will be followed by Beth Crowtuh.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski and council members. My name is Muriel Bronstein. I live in the Thomas Station. I have been concerned about the problem of homelessness in Folsom for over two years and started a group of interested Folsom residents to study the issue. Some of you spoke to our group. We spent over a year fact-finding and have developed a slide presentation to show you. I am concerned for the homeless population, but I'm also concerned for our city. It meets all of our needs, the homeless, our citizens, especially those who live near homeless encampments and businesses, to solve this problem. Once the moratorium on paying back rent comes to an end, we and all other cities will have a surge in homelessness. We must take steps now to begin to solve this problem in Folsom. We can't do it alone. I urge the council to partner with other governmental agencies like the county to bring money and service agencies like HART, Powerhouse Ministries, and First Step Community to coordinate services in Folsom. This problem must be solved. You are our elected officials. We're counting on you to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your next speaker is Beth Crowtuh, followed by Jean Schuman.
Thank you for this opportunity and I want to just personally thank all of you city officials that make Folsom such a wonderful place to live. I feel so blessed to be a Folsom resident. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the unhoused or the underhoused who also call Folsom their home. As a volunteer with HART and a person who spent years doing a lot of different things in the community, I've gotten to know many of those who live a very different life than I do. Many of my friends on the street are broken, confused, vulnerable, and they've lost all hope for living a different way of life. Most of them have some type of addiction or mental illness, but they are people and they do reside in Folsom. Many have lived here for years. This is the community that they know. This is their home. This is where they feel safe and they aren't going to go away. We can't pretend that they just rode here on light rail and are going to be gone soon. We can't just remove their campsite and hope that they'll move to a new city. They're here and they love Folsom, too. I know it's a really big deal, but I was thinking today, at least, we're not in a situation like Sacramento. We don't have 10,000 that they're trying to figure out what to do with. Actually, last week, HART completed our own census and we have the names of 96 people who have been identified. And actually, I feel like we should reduce that number to 95 because yesterday, a young man, 27, lost the battle to drugs and he died on our streets. We're sure that the number is actually higher than 95 because this doesn't include college students and other at-risk teens that we know also experience homelessness. So, let's just talk about the 95 who are currently dwelling in Folsom but have no housing. As we all know, there's no easy answers, but we have to do something. The time's come to stop ignoring or expecting someone else to deal with it. Volunteers in our community do a lot and we hope to get even more folks involved, but the volunteer groups can't do it all and we need more of the city's help. HART has put together some suggestions of things that we believe would make a difference. I want to ask, actually, I want to beg you to seriously consider a budget request that HART will be making. We know that there isn't permanent housing available for all of those living on the streets or in their cars, but there are things that we could be doing to help. We should be doing more to help. We have a desperate need for transitional housing space. We also feel that a day center would be extremely valuable. We could provide services like mentors, a chaplain, drug counseling, computers, referral services, medical, mental health care. We can even provide basic showers that could make a huge difference in someone's life. So, I know that there's a lot of things that our city officials have to deal with, but I truthfully believe the needs of our people, both housed and unhoused, are a priority. So, I thank you all for caring.
Thank you.
Your next speaker is Jean Schuman, who was followed by Judy Alexander.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jean Schuman and I'm the founder of Jake's Journey Home. It's a nonprofit assisting our unhoused veterans and community members in obtaining services and distributing necessity totes. This cause was named after my son Jake, who tragically passed in 2019. He was a CB veteran, a small business owner, and a helping and compassionate person. I picked up his torch and continue to try and help make someone's tomorrow better than today. With that said, I've had the blessing of working with HART of Folsom and the wonderful volunteers looking to facilitate our unhoused back into life. Throughout this process, one skillset rings true. We must have the ability for all the entities to work together cohesively, together to build trust with this challenging and fragile population. The goal is assimilation, treatment for mental health and addiction, housing, job skills, and spiritual health. After spending several months in Lyons Park, we realized people don't wake up one morning and say, gee, I want to be homeless, you know, have no family, become a drug addict, have mental health issues. A life experience leaves an insurmountable scar and the spiral begins. PTSD is real. Depression is real. Life and death are real. How do we cope? If you look at our unhoused veterans and community members, you get an up-close and vivid portrayal of how people cope. They are brothers, sisters, wives, husbands, sons, daughters, and more. They are ours. These camps to the ordinary person look downright scary. However, the other side of that, it is very indicative of what's going on with our folks. The hoarding, the mess, the craziness, the stories are clear. What can we do? Having questions about services, a group of us gathered, meeting, the meeting consisted of one of our council members, Rosario, our own FPD Sergeant Zalea, navigator Laura, Heather, Beth, and myself. This meeting led to some sense of accomplishments, but many more questions. We agreed to start bi-weekly meetings for the next few months, giving us the opportunity to work together, share experiences, and collaborate on the best way to filter the needed services and the best way to impact the homelessness in Folsom. I'd like to place an idea out here and let it sit with you. Our unhoused have to learn how to live within rules within a community. How might we try this? The proposal, I would name it interim transitional accommodation. Until the housing situation is remedied, this is the only wording I can come up with, we are asking government entities to donate 20 tents, 20 ground tarps, and 20 lockable footlockers. We allow them to collect the unhoused, their personal belongings from the site at Lyons, clean the area of all debris. We help to place tarps as an area of demarcation, place tents up, and give one locker per person. We also place a serviced dumpster, porta potty, and sink wash station at the area down by the stream. The rules? Your tarp is the area, no more, no less. This area is to be cleaned, no fire hazards, no trash will be permitted, keep the area clean and free of debris. This instills a sense of pride, ownership, and that there are rules to live by for everyone. And secondly, I would also like to see a meeting between all the religious and faith-based groups here in Folsom to establish a trained chaplain to go out and meet with our folks, to establish an important spiritual component for them. Council, our unhoused deserve better. They live here, they have for years. We owe it to ourselves, the public, and our unhoused to get this done. It is the best interest of all. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next speaker is Judy Alexander and Judy will be followed by Kreta Adams.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Judy Alexander and I'm the current president of HART. HART of Folsom needs the city to support our efforts and those of other nonprofits to alleviate homelessness. In addition to the city navigator, the Folsom Police Department, and other city agencies that clean up parks and sites here in Folsom, we want to provide transitional housing at Bidwell Suites or other transition sites in the city. $50,000 per year will subsidize four units at Bidwell Suites where HART of Folsom will manage its transitional housing program, which provides wraparound services for clients that are drug-free and either employed or actively seeking employment. These include connection to benefits, financial planning, reconnection with positive relationships, and other mentoring services. Faith-based organizations, First Step Communities, and HART are interested in having the city budget $100,000 towards acquisition and positioning of six tiny homes. This is a one-time cost as these units will become self-sufficient once in place. We also need to expand the current day center services here and that has been mentioned as well. This would include office space for the city navigator, a respite center during inclement weather, space for food service, initial estimate of cost of lease and minimal staffing per year, $300,000. HART of Folsom is also asking for city assistance in providing a 50-bed shelter. Again, depending on facility lease or purchase and number of beds, the cost estimate will vary. We estimate $860,000 per year for a 50-bed space and services, including paying staff. A day center might also be included in that space. Details on all numbers are available and of course, costs depend on city partnering with others, including the county and the state. However, the closer to home we keep the costs, the more control we have on how we design the programs. HART of Folsom is aware of the current economic challenges. We are also aware that monies from block grants, impact fees, housing trust funds, and the American Rescue Program might provide a variety of resources as you ponder what the possibilities are. Homeless outreach needs to be part of the city budget as an intentional and ongoing part of the collective responsibility of each merchant, corporation, homeowner, and renter. We already have a volunteer base in our city that rivals any other. We already have a volunteer base in our city that rivals any other. The city can set the tone for this inclusive approach, leading all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kreta Adams, who will be followed by Ed Kelly.
Good evening. I'm a current board member of HART and one of the founders of Feeding the Fellows in the park. The city of Folsom serves all of our citizens in different ways. These ways depend on what special interest group people are in. They may be property owners, as we are, utilizing the water, sewer, and garbage services. They may be the youth utilizing the parks and sports complexes. They may be the seniors needing home repairs or a place to meet at the senior center. The citizens of Folsom who are homeless also need services. Many of these services are provided by the nonprofit charities, faith communities, and the community service groups. Most are dependent on free will, community donations. As we grow and evolve as a city and react to this community economic hardship of our times, we are challenged to provide additional and enhanced services. HART is specifically in the need of city help in funding the transitional housing, expanded day center space, and providing emergency shelter. Part of the needs, as we see, is for the city to actively spend time working with us and encouraging the county of Sacramento to commit the services to this community. For example, Sacramento County has resources and funding to help Folsom get these services for the homeless who are mentally ill. Mental illness can be genetic, but is also associated with drugs and alcohol. Sometimes parents have children who leave home at a young age due to a toxic environment but find themselves lost in the dangerous world of the homelessness. Adults themselves succumb to substance abuse, which we usually find stems from child abuse. In a pandemic this past year, we witnessed many children and parents trying to cope and not succeed. We need to make sure that they are well-served. Many are now covered by our medical, but are challenged to get appointments here, as there are very few doctors who accept it. There are a lot of ways that we can serve our community better by demanding that the county remember that we deserve their attention as a city. Recently, there was a collaboration with the county to provide interviewers for housing to Folsom. It did, and in everyone's opinion, we had a positive outcome. We do need to build on this momentum for housing. I want to update some of the numbers that were given earlier. We actually had 52 guests, 84 nights. And if you count hotel room nights, that equals 852 room nights that we provided a shelter over the winter. I do want to thank all of you who did support us at Shelter and our friends here on the streets, whether that be a weekly meal or your dedication to time every week. And we look forward to working with you year-round. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ed Kelly, and Ed will be followed by Steve Waters.
Hello. Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Ed Kelly. I am the past president of HART of Folsom. I was the incorporator that moved up here from Elk Grove and discovered this fabulous community, but I did discover that there was the same issues going on in this community as others. There are now 10 HART organizations throughout the Sacramento area, and the reason there are 10 of us is because everybody in the community wants to try to address the issues. We are going to have the homeless with us no matter what. What we want to do is try to give them an opportunity to move forward, to get out of homelessness, if that's their desire. Bringing the resources available to them, whether that's drug and alcohol treatment, whether it's mental health services, sometimes it's as easy as helping them through getting paperwork, getting a job. You can't get a job without a driver's license. You can't get a Social Security card without this. You know, there's a lot of little steps that need to be done, and that's what our mentors will do. Our desire is to help people get out of homelessness, not to make them comfortable in their homelessness. We're not trying to make the city a place to attract homeless. We're trying to make the city a place where the homeless can come and get themselves out and step forward in life. We've been successful in many ways in getting people moving forward. One of the things that we do need is the transitional housing. It's very hard to get up and go to work every day if you were sleeping under the bush today. You have nowhere to put your things. You have nowhere to shower after you've worked. So transitional housing is an important step, and we're asking the city council to look at funding for that. The other thing that we would really like to have is a community resource center within the city, and that may be for not just HART but for many other groups. Folsom's Hope, the Food Bank, where people who are struggling can come and receive services from the county or from the city. The county has many programs that are state-funded that are available for people that need them. Unfortunately, most of them are downtown. I had a client that we were working with, tried to get him into a drug rehab program. He had a choice of going to Watt and Fulton Avenue, or I'm sorry, Watt and Marconi Avenue, or 24th and Franklin every day for his drug counseling. That's impossible for somebody that is homeless and has no method of transportation. The county can bring those services here, but it's going to take this council to get them to push that and bring those forward. A community resource center would allow us to have those offices available for them to bring those resources into the city and to make them available at a given time a week that we could bring them in. I thank this council very much for the support that you've given HART of Folsom, as we've only been an organization for the last little over four years. But in that four years, I think we've made a big difference, and your support has been a big part of that, and I thank you.
You're here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Waters, and then we have two more comment letters to read.
Good evening. My name is Steve Waters. I'm a resident here in Folsom, also the director and founder of First Step Communities. Our nonprofit organization administers shelters, cabin communities, and many different types of services for the homeless in Sacramento County, in the city of Sacramento, and working also with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I've presented some ideas and cost models to some of you in the past, in person and by phone. Tonight, I would like to just add a few things. I think first, I would like to say that the speakers before me have done a great job of presenting some good ideas, sharing ideas, and sharing some proposals, which I support. So I don't want to be redundant and say the same thing. I want to just leave you with a few messages from myself to follow up on previous conversations. First, understanding some of the concerns you have, economic concerns about budget pressures, especially in the time of COVID and the pandemic. I want to just tell you that in a lot of conversations I've been having with elected officials at the city and county level in Sacramento recently, they're telling me money's not the issue, that right now, because of COVID, because of the growth in the homeless problem across California, that there is more federal and state money pouring in than ever before for this cause. The trick, the challenge, I guess is a better word, is to figure out how to work with them and fund programs here in Folsom. I also would like you to accept that I think it's incredibly important that we realize that we can't solve the problems of homelessness, even in Folsom, without intense professional services. We've been working with this population for quite some time, and I get readouts from staff every day on a lot of our clients. Many of the most vulnerable that we serve in the unhoused population are suffering from mental and emotional issues, often untreated for a long period of time, stemming back perhaps even to their childhoods. There's often chronic illness involved, and far too often, some addiction. And even more shocking is how many of the people that we treat are suffering from two or three of these conditions at once. It's something that requires a very specialized attention. Just in conclusion, I'd like to say that we can't ignore it any longer. It's everywhere, and it's here in Folsom also. We have to take some steps now because if we ignore it, suddenly we'll find ourselves in the position that other cities, other cities close by to us, if you know what I mean, have found themselves where it grew so big that all of a sudden, they realize they have to do something, but it's almost out of control. And we have the luxury, if you will, terrible word to use here, but we have the positive thing on our side that we can get involved in now and do something in our community before it's out of control. So I'd like to just leave you with those thoughts, and thank you for listening, everybody, tonight. I think that the speakers before me put some very interesting proposals in front of you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waters. And thank you to everybody that came to speak on that topic. It's one that deserves lots and lots of attention. Okay.
Two more letters to read.
Great.
Public comment. The first is from John Wright, and John writes, "I am writing this email in support of increasing city funding for the creation of transitional housing opportunities for our citizens who are experiencing homelessness in our city. They are members of our community, and they need our help. The present funding is not adequate. Contrary to what many believe, the homeless in Folsom are our homeless. They have ties to our community, if not in the present, but in the past. As you consider funding for the new budget, please put their needs as a priority and not as an afterthought. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to voice my concerns. John Wright." And your last comment and speaker on this item is from Vijay Jana Lagada, who writes, "First of all, I want to express my profound and sincere gratitude to the city council members for extending so much support to the homeless folks in various ways. I dare say Folsom City helps the homeless folks more than any city in the greater Sacramento area. I am a HART volunteer, helping with mentoring, shelter, and food service. Firsthand, I can see the need and thus earnestly requesting the city to do a little more. I request the city to provide funding for the creation of transitional housing opportunities so HART can better assist homeless folks. This funding will be used by HART to expand day center and/or shelter so HART can help them more professionally and meaningfully. Empowering HART with more funding like this will help them to understand their needs and facilitate mentors, health professionals, city navigators, and county mental health service professionals to serve the Folsoms homeless population better. Signed, Vijay Jana Lagada." That concludes your public comment on this item.
Okay. Last call. Anybody else like to make a comment on something not on the agenda tonight? All right, fantastic. Let's move on to the consent calendar, please.
I'd like to pull item five, please.
Okay.
I'll move six through 10.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve items six through 10.
Council members Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
And item five has been pulled for discussion. This is ordinance number 1312, an ordinance of the city of Folsom adding Chapter 12.24 to the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to sidewalk vendors. This was scheduled as second reading and adoption.
I don't need a presentation. I'm just voting no, so I pulled it.
So I'll move item five?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Council member Rodriguez.
So I'm voting, I just want to make sure.
You, the fact that you seconded the motion has no bearing whatsoever on your vote. You can vote yes or no.
Okay, I think it's a yes.
So the motion is to approve ordinance number 1312.
To approve.
To approve.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Aquino.
No.
Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, please call the next item.
All right. Your next item this evening is Old Business, item number 11. This is a workshop discussion regarding City Council Governance Manual, Part 1 of 2, and Direction to Staff. And we wanted to briefly revisit the early discussion of Governance Manual, particularly since some time has passed since the manual was initially proposed. In November of 2019, the council first considered the idea of a Governance Manual, and at that time, the council previewed general ideas for suggested content. The council expressed preliminary interest in approving a Governance Manual, although there was some caution expressed towards any rules that would unduly constrain individual council members in their elected roles. The council discussed how a Governance Manual could be helpful, and the discussion focused on the benefits of having agreement towards a normative governance practices that were documented. At that time, staff was directed to prepare and bring back a draft, and so the items discussed at that initial meeting have been carried over into an updated and expanded proposal that is being presented to you tonight. And it's worth noting that while this Governance Manual was suggested by Vice Mayor Aquino, she advocated, and the council agreed, that if a Governance Manual was to be approved, it needed to be the collective agreement of the entire council and not be representative of one member's opinion or one member's voice. So the council suggested that the draft Governance Manual be brought before them in stages rather than all at once, and that way, feedback could be provided on each section, which would then develop into the next round. And the final step would be integration of all feedback and comments, and the item would be returned to the city council for further review and approval. And we envisioned this happening over three meetings, but of course, additional meetings could be scheduled as needed. So tonight, we'll look at Sections 1 and 2, dealing with effective governance and roles and responsibilities, and then at a future meeting, we will look at Sections 3 and 4. So moving on to Section 1. Section 1 addresses general principles of effective governance, and we begin with this introductory statement, and I've broken it out into three portions here just to make it easier to review. And it really reflects the council's commitment to principles of good government, how important that is to the council, and it acknowledges that the city council works best as a cohesive unit that makes decisions in the best interest, but it also recognizes that each council member brings their unique style and experience and expertise to their role. And at the end here, we borrow from Max Weber's theory on the ethics of action that achieve the greatest good for the greatest number of people. And in doing so, we want to recognize really that there are no perfect decisions that are perfect for everybody, and yet, it is always the council's goal to work for the greatest good for the community. And the next two slides list some of the typical characteristics of, first, on this slide, effective council, and on the next slide, the effective characteristics of a council member. And of course, this is not meant to be an exhaustive list, but rather to represent the general nature of an effective council. And I won't read them all to you. I know you've looked at them, but these are just some of the characteristics that we thought were worthy of mentioning. And we move on to some of the characteristics of an effective council member. We move on to Section 2 of roles and responsibilities, and again, we start with an introductory statement, broken out into its three elements for easier review. And in this, we really want to reflect and honor the Folsoms Council Manager Form of Government. government, which recognizes that the council's role is to set public policy, and it is the city manager's role to implement public policy. And it affirms the importance that is inherent in a clear understanding of everybody's individual So in the next couple of slides, we look at the particulars of the mayor's role, and then next we'll look at the vice mayor's role. And this is based on the Folsom Charter, Section 2.04, which sets out the specifics of these roles. And these aren't all of them, but we just thought these were the primary functions of the mayor's office. The vice mayor's role is a little easier to summarize. Vice mayor is to fulfill the roles of the duties in the mayor's absence. So moving on to the city manager's role, which is also established within the charter. And the next slides here again list some of the most commonly exercised roles, including the generalized power to perform duties consistent with the charter and the municipal code. So again, we've broken out the 15 most prevalent duties, but we can promise you this is not all of the duties.
Occasional mistletoe abatement.
Yeah. So we wanted to spend just a minute or two talking about some of the particular responsibilities. And as we've just reviewed, the city manager's role is distinct and separate from the city council's role. Now, the city's charter specifically prohibits the council from interfering with the city manager. And in other words, the powers that are designated to the city manager are reserved exclusively to the city manager. This prohibition was intended in part to avoid a situation where the city manager is given conflicting direction from individual council member, and it also respects.
Oh, that never happened.
And it is also intended to respect the city, the council manager form of government that was adopted for Folsom. And in practice, what this means is that the council deals with operations of the city through the city manager. It's not intended to stifle council opinion, and it is important that council members express their views fully with the city manager on matters of interest or concern. In responding to public complaints, again, the city charter exclusively grants the city manager with authority to investigate all complaints. So as a good rule of thumb, if council members receive a complaint or injury, they should be mindful not to make promises or promise a particular course of action, but rather those matters should be referred to the city manager for investigation and resolution. And of course, the city manager would keep the council members informed of the courses of action that are taken. And lastly here, we wanted to memorialize the city manager's important role in delivering an effective orientation program for newly elected council members. And this orientation will introduce new council members to city operations, will review roles and responsibilities, familiarize council members with meeting protocols, Brown Act, rules of confidentiality, and conflict of interest. And if this Governance Manual is ultimately adopted by the city council, it would become a part of that orientation process. And we offered, you know, the council has the roles and the authority granted by the charter, but we thought there's certainly also a prevalent informal role that council members hold. And we looked at some of these ideas as tips that might be helpful, especially for newly elected council members. Now, it's really, the council's prerogative, if you wish to include this type of information, tips for an informal role, we thought we would offer it up and just see what the reaction was, if this was something that you thought would be helpful.
I personally think it is helpful.
Okay.
Particularly for new council members, because this is something that honestly, day one is not necessarily obvious. It's something that you generally end up learning through some sort of a bad experience by promising something that you have absolutely no power to deliver and not understanding that things like, just because there's 15 people screaming inside this chamber, doesn't mean that they're representative of the other 82,000 people in Folsom. So those are, those are hard lessons to learn, especially when you're new to a council.
Thank you, Councilmember Howell. We did take a look at items number 2 and 4 and 6 as particularly relevant to exactly that. You know, we looked at, don't be stampeded into action by special interest group. Now, it may be legitimate, but your job is to find the entire community's long-term public interest.
Yeah.
And number 4, we looked at, you know, you wouldn't want to assume that only you know the best way to accomplish things. Many, many voices contribute to good decisions, and that's a good thing to remember.
And there's, and there's a lot of circumstances where somebody makes a suggestion for something that we actually tried to do 12 years ago, and these are all the reasons why it didn't work.
That's right.
So it might sound like a great idea, but, you know, been there, done that, got the T-shirt, and subsequently burned it.
That's right.
Ran into that wall already.
Yeah. And just the hard lesson, that there is a tremendous amount of discomfort in making very public decisions, and we've all, you know, experienced that in this room, where sometimes these decisions are really hard to make, and it is part of the job, and it does, it does take time to learn those lessons.
That's why we get paid the big bucks.
That's right.
Good.
So that was the information that we wanted to cover tonight in the first two sections, and we would welcome the council's feedback and suggestions. If there's additional areas that would you like, you would like to see developed in these first two sections, we'll take that feedback, make some changes, bring it back, and then we'll be bringing back Sections 3 and 4. And assuming the council is still on board and interested in approving a Governance Manual, we would bring back a complete document for final approval.
Great job, in my opinion, so far by staff, and I just want to thank Sarah. I can't actually see her from down here, but for bringing this up a couple of years ago. I think it's a very, very important document, and will be helpful for this and future councils.
Yeah, definitely. Did you want to comment, Sarah?
Well, I do want to thank our fabulous city clerk for taking the lead on this on behalf of our staff. Certainly, a lot of this is my words, and Krista added some things, which I think are very good, but we certainly have no pride of authorship here. So we do want this to be very collaborative, as she said, so if there's something you don't agree with, and we want to strike it out, then please, let's do that. The only thing that I, I think, I personally would like to see, the first paragraph that kind of explains why we're doing this maybe beefed up a little bit, and maybe I can work with Krista to kind of propose some language, just to make it really clear. I think to some people, this probably seems very obvious, a lot of these things, but I think the act of talking about it and developing this and then reviewing it on a regular basis. When I was on the school board, we had a Governance Manual, and we reviewed it every single year. And I just think it, you know, strengthens our relationship, it, you know, makes us more thoughtful about what we're doing, but it also shows a great commitment to the public that we are dedicated to good governance.
And if I remember correctly, wasn't there some language in that first draft that you and I looked at a year and a half ago, to that effect, in the, in the draft document that you sent to me?
Uh, there may be, yeah. I don't know.
If you've sent that to.
Yeah.
The staff, that might be helpful.
Okay.
I have to admit that when I was reading it, I, my first thoughts were, well, so much of this is really elementary and a given. We're elected officials, we've already convinced the majority of the individuals that when we were campaigning, the reasons why we would be council members. And so as I was reading it, I thought, well, so much of this is really common sense and just a given, that I thought, why do we have to document it? Is there any teeth to it that, you know, I mean, I think we give kindergarten classes, you know, these are the requirements or the things that you do, and if you don't, then you get your recess cut. But in this case here, there really isn't anything that, a consequence of, if I, if I'm not, I don't know, use one, you know, follow, well, I mean, so much of it is just, there's no really consequence if someone does something that's not by the book.
Maybe I can take a stab at that one, because there is no direct penalty for violating these principles, right? The penalty is getting not elected again in the future, right?
Right, correct.
So disappointing the voters of Folsom. It's useful, and we actually had almost the exact same debate when I first joined the SECOG Board, because somebody had proposed a statement of principles, and a one-page version of this, right? And it's, it's pretty easy to pass through it and kind of get that impression that it's that poster about everything I ever needed to know I learned in kindergarten, right? But the reason that poster is impactful is because there's real truth to it, and I think to buy into being a, you know, in a leadership position in Folsom demands that you be open about, you know, what it is you're committing to, and I think that's, that's the purpose that this serves, rather than as a preemptive penalty phase.
Yeah, no, I support it. When I was reading it, I thought, you know, there's a lot of good information for anybody who's ever interested in, you know, potentially running for council. I looked at the municipal code and said, what are the requirements of the council? And I remember the bullet points that I read, what does the mayor do, what does the vice mayor do? But, you know, it's just, it is, so much of it is a given of things that are our responsibility and things that we do as.
So I'll just remind everybody how uncommon common sense actually is.
Oh, I know.
And having served on this council for a long time, I have served with council members who could have benefited from this.
I would add too, there are, I mean, we're not the first to do this. There are a lot of, you know, municipalities out there who have something, and some of them are, are very narrow in scope, and some are kind of like, not only Governance Manual, but it's, it's a handbook on how to do everything, right? Here's, here's how you dial, get an outside line on the phone, or, I mean, you know what I mean? They are comprehensive, some of them. And I think, you know, in the next section that will come, I know, at least when I was drafting, that there were things in there about, about our regional assignments, and trying to keep consistency from year to year so that we can have longevity on some of those commissions, and taking advantage of individual council members' expertise and trying to match them to certain things. So I think things that maybe aren't written anywhere else will be in here.
That's right, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Rodriguez, I do appreciate that comment, because we did feel even bringing these first two sections, they were pretty vanilla. But the next sections, I think, will be a little more in-depth and substantive on the types of governance norms that the council may want to adopt. We're going to be looking at particulars with advocacy and communication, how social media should be handled by council members. That's been a bit of a challenge in the past. And as California laws change on what you can and cannot do, it becomes helpful to memorialize that. We're also, as the Vice Mayor said, talking about doing regional representation assignments, how that's done, and some of the nuances of speaking as an individual versus speaking for the city. When a council member has a differing opinion than the majority of the council, what is the appropriate way to represent their position to outside groups? And that, that's going to come in Section 3, and then in Section 4, we're going to be talking about some of the basic principles of open meetings, avoiding conflicts of interest, how items are placed on an agenda, you know, some of the more mundane policy work, cultivating public trust, how we handle external agenda item requests, how we handle presentations from external speakers. So I think the next sections may have more of what you're looking for in useful content. So we look forward to your feedback on those as well.
And honestly, I think this could be a valuable document for John Q. Public. You know, we've all seen comments on Folsom Charter, any social media, where they, the general public has never taken a governance class, they have no idea what responsibilities we actually have versus what we don't have, and I think it could be helpful for those people, particularly the ones that are, that are extremely vocal about stuff like this, criticizing what we're doing, because they don't understand what authority we actually have and what authorities we do not have.
All right. And to respond to your other point about that there's no punitive measures in this, staff was not quite so bold as to propose that. However, we would let that decision rest with the city council. Many years ago, when we looked at the council's ethics policy, the discussion was had at the time, should there be punitive measures contained within that ethics policy? And at the time, that council, which was a different council except for one member, felt that that was not appropriate. Staff would yield that decision to the council, so if that was something you wanted to see, we would take direction on that as well.
And I would say that, you know, this is a living, breathing document. It's going to change over time, and we have to start somewhere, so, you know, we're taking a bite of the elephant, and we'll just keep going.
Yeah, very good. YK?
I like that.
Your thoughts?
No, I'm welcoming this document.
Okay.
Being three months old or four months old in this town, it helps a lot, believe me. And a few things I'm learning, and that's what I start every time I reach, you know, our city manager. I want to make sure, I want to understand, you know, some of the stuff is already defined here for understanding. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you so much, our Vice Mayor.
So I have a couple of just thought suggestions that are a little on the specific side. The, on the second page, the second bullet point says, acknowledges his or her own potential biases, listens with an open mind, is willing to have preconceived ideas challenged. If you were looking for something to add to that opening statement, to strengthen it, I believe that bullet point is so essential to us having constructive dialogue and to us being able to make decisions based on current information and sort of the changing landscape of things. I would like to see that in some way incorporated into that opening, if everybody's agreeable to that. I really love that statement, and I think it's absolutely essential to, to our being able to make good decisions. The second thing, and this, this may be a little complicated, so perhaps the city attorney can stop me if I'm going too far afield. The vice mayor's role, the second item of the mayor's role says, "Meeting regularly and as appropriate with the city manager," et cetera, et cetera. I really think that the vice mayor's role should be to participate in that kind of dialogue on a consistent basis, rather than just be waiting on deck for things to happen. And that has happened very frequently in our terms, at least the three of us. I don't know what it's like historically, but I see the vice mayor role as a, that extra advisory role being really important.
I would probably disagree with you on that. I think that the council members on an individual basis need to meet with, with the city manager or any city staff as frequently as they think they need to. I don't see that, I actually don't like the mayor and vice mayor being a tag team.
Okay.
I just think it's, it's a bad way to move forward, because then you end up with two people potentially being in lockstep, and they're not necessarily going to be on the same page as the other three. So I think we all need to act a little bit more independently.
Okay, fair enough.
That's my, my suggestion.
There also is an opportunity for growth, you know, for me professionally, you know, if there's, at some point in the event that, you know, the vice mayor position may become available, I think there's some form of a training that one could benefit from in order to be able to take on the, you know, the mayor role and have some kind of experience. But I get what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
It's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
You can agree or disagree.
Yeah. I, I think there's, at least periodically, I think it's helpful to have that other person directly involved in those conversations together, simply so that there's continuity if and when they have to step into, you know, acting as the mayor potentially.
Although in the event that happened, we still have our own individual opinions that are, I mean, I think we would respect.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Of course, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, and then the last thing is just, and I don't know where to put this. It may be actually in Section 3 and 4, but it occurred to me, based on conversations we've had recently here, that some commentary about how to provide advice to staff at these meetings might be useful, because advice can take on a lot of different characters. It might be anecdotal stuff, it might be, you know, sort of experience, as Carrie often helps us out with sort of institutional knowledge. It could be defining limitations, like, go do this, but don't go beyond this point cost-wise or time-wise or staff-wise, whatever. And it could be, you know, getting, you know, understanding when you reach a point where you actually need more information, and understanding that whether or not that information actually is available and is going to be useful. So I think some rumination on that topic might be useful to, you know, be, you know, there's a point, there was, there's a comment in the, in the document that talks about being clear about your, you know, what you stand for. You know, how much, how much you want to, you know, wave a flag about your personal opinions is not of all that much value to me, whereas being very clear in the advice that you're giving, I think, is super valuable to the staff particularly.
And the only comment that I'm going to make on that front is, the only people that the council member should be giving any kind of direction to is the city manager.
I'm sorry, when I said staff, I meant the city manager, our staff.
Okay.
Of one.
And I say that. And I say that because
Thank you for clarifying that for me, yeah.
There are council members have gone directly way past the city manager's office to staff and were giving them direction about what they should do tomorrow. And these are people that are probably eight levels below the city manager's office.
Yeah, my apology. I was using staff specifically to mean the city manager.
The document too, that, you know, and what I have historically done is if, if I wanted to talk to, let's, I'll just pick Marcus as an example, because we talk geeky stuff together. But I will typically copy Elaine on communications that I have with somebody that works for Elaine, so that she knows what the communication has been. She may decide she doesn't even want to read it. It's like, oh, it's just those two geeks again. But, you know, there have been other times when I think that information is important.
Yeah, that's actually addressed in this part of the document where it says, hey, you know, contacting the broader staff, Elaine's staff is for inquiry purposes, should be for inquiry purposes only.
Right. If you have a question, no problem, pick up the phone call, but don't direct them to do anything unless Elaine's aware of it.
Right, and I am the only
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean to misstate that.
And I knew exactly where you were headed, Mayor, and I think that it is helpful. And I think what you may have been getting at is providing, you know, as much specificity to, to me in terms of as you reach your consensus, particularly on, you know, the big, complex, controversial issues, what are the non-starters, you know, what are the, you know, boundaries, you know, to whatever degree that you feel the deist that it, what is, what's really important to you. I'll figure out all the details and I'll implement it, but if there are boundaries that you know and that you can reach consensus on and communicating that, you know, to me, that's very helpful. And I think that's what I was interpreting is what you were getting at.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's that old communication game of asking for a sandwich and then turning down the one that you get because you didn't really want peanut butter and jelly.
I, I think that could be a bullet point in the characteristics of an effective council. You just wordsmith it for us and.
Sure, okay.
I'll take a stab at that. Mayor, I have one quick comment.
Yeah, sure.
This is a great document. Let, let me, you know, say one more time. But if you think, especially city manager and the city attorney, I don't know, Rosario, I'm going to pull you in, we can give some feedback. As a new city council member, what are those few things we would like to incorporate in that city council onboarding, new member onboarding and orientation? And this is one of them, just now you mentioned, taking one or two agenda items, hey, these will come into the debate and how do you handle it? I was unclear first few meetings. I was trying to say it, but I was not. After seeing recently Sarah, how she brings that items, pulling out and how she is, huh, I could have done that. So, no, what I mean to say is, it helps if we can get that orientation training upfront, first reading, second readings. I, I love to give you, if, if it is not this document, whatever that document is.
We, you know.
So a moot city council meeting so that we can practice.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, I mean, that's actually an interesting idea, but the year I became city manager was the first time, you know, I initiated the first new council member orientation.
Sarah and I were guinea pigs for this thing, so, yeah.
So it's, it's a relatively new process that, you know, and dynamic, and we're willing to change and update as, as we need to improve that process. But we do realize as, as we put forward these orientations, that it's probably like drinking from a fire hose. There's so much information. And so, you know, it's, we may, we need to break it up over a few sessions and do it more regularly, you know. I know you and I in particular do a lot of one-on-ones, kind of, you know, to plow through issues, and I always welcome that as well.
Right. You know, some of them can go to that new council member orientation document, probably. Yeah, we can talk offline, but thank you for bringing those ones.
Okay. Public comment?
Okay, any further comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the feedback.
Great, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, that takes us to Old Business Item Number 12. This is a presentation regarding the park naming policy and direction to staff.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Lorraine Pajoni, your Parks and Rec Director. Tonight, we are going to be making a brief presentation and it's coming from our, one of our subcommittees out of the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm going to be introducing our Chair of Parks and Rec, and then he'll be introducing the Chair of our Subcommittee, who addressed an item that we brought to our Parks and Rec Commission on Park Naming. This is a yearly process, or as needed, as needed, I should say, process. When parks need to be named, we bring those to the Parks and Rec Commission, and we have a current policy with a list of names on them. And we present to them that we have so-and-so parks to be named. The, the park that we had in particular was Neighborhood Park 3, which is in the Folsom Plan area. And so that went from our Parks and Rec Commission to the Subcommittee. And through that process came some additional thoughts and ideas that they would like to share with you tonight. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Nasworth, and that he was our, he is our Parks and Rec Chair.
Great.
Thank you. Welcome Chairman Nasworth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. My name is Dave Nasworth. I'm a Folsom resident. I am also the Chair of your Folsom Parks and Recreation Commission. I just wanted to take a, just a brief moment here, I would say thank you for allowing us to bring this topic forward, and also to say a big thank you to the rest of our Commission as well as to the city staff. I've been serving on the Commission now, this is my fifth year, actually, first year as Chair. Matter of fact, my first term was with Councilmember YK. We actually sat together in those two chairs at the end there. And he never moved, so. But, you know, term after term, I've just been really impressed with the, the horsepower coming out of our Commission and, and just the, the critical thinking, problem-solving attitude out of the Commission as well as the park staff that results in a topic such as this, where, you know, they looked at something that hadn't been looked at in a while and thought it was worth bringing forward and perhaps making it better. So that was the, sort of, our purpose for tonight. Before I get going too long, I'm going to quickly turn it over to my colleague, Matt Hedges. He serves as the Chair of our Budget Subcommittee and is the true expert on this topic, so it's best you hear directly from him. But I'll be here to take questions if needed.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's so nice to see you all in person after so very long. As stated, I'm Matt Hedges. I'm Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Park Naming. As Lorraine mentioned, last year, we started a process soliciting names for the naming of our future parks in the Folsom Plan area. And the Parks and Recreation Commission created an ad hoc committee to evaluate those names, specifically for Neighborhood Park Number 3, for eventual recommendation to the City Council. During the meetings of the ad hoc commission, very quickly, we had some concerns with the park naming resolution, which was approved in 1996 by City Council, and we subsequently had some questions about how to proceed. The following summarizes the ad hoc committee's main concerns with the existing guidelines for park naming. Current policy implies parks are generally named after an individual or family. The option to name a park for something other than an individual or family is not specifically excluded, but is also not specifically provided for. The ad hoc committee expressed that the guidelines should state that it also allows naming of parks to be inspired by topography, geography, native plants, and historical significance. Current policy is silent on prohibitions, such as a park should not be named after a felon or associated with tobacco, alcohol, religion, et cetera. The committee thinks this should specifically be addressed. Current policy is silent on whether the individual should be deceased or alive to be eligible. Some committee members felt that the person should be deceased. Other clarifications that could be added is how long of a wait period there should be before a name could be used if a person is deceased. Current policy states that names remain on the list forever. We're getting a very long list. The ad hoc committee discussed providing a timeline on how long names remain on the list before they must be submitted for reconsideration. Current policy is silent on the process to name city facilities, such as buildings, community centers, bridges, et cetera. The ad hoc committee expressed that the guidelines should allow for a process to name city facilities. And lastly, current policy is silent on how a donor or a sponsor of a park or facility should be considered if they donate land or funding. The ad hoc committee felt a plan would be needed to prepare to define donor and sponsorship levels if this specific criterion were included. We are not asking you to adopt a policy tonight. As this is something that the ad hoc committee believes will be an item of public interest, it is our suggestion to allow Parks and Recreation Commission to initiate a public outreach or polling process to obtain feedback on these proposed changes. Such outreach or polling would include questions that will assist in framing the specifics of the modified policy based on the aforementioned elements of interest. If you agree, then after the public outreach, it would be our intention to send a draft of a new policy to City Council for potential adoption. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'd be happy to help answer any questions if you have them.
Okay.
I have a question. So when you go out and get information from the public, how will you know that they are Folsom residents that are responding?
Lorraine, can you help with that?
Councilmember Rodriguez, well, we're, it, it may not be foolproof. Some of the tools we are planning on using is, there's a new module, part of, part of our website that will allow us to do some outreach. I suppose one of the questions could be, are you a Folsom resident, you know, and, and hopefully you get an honest answer, but.
Ask for your, you ask for their water bill account number.
Mr. Hedges, thank you so much for bringing this one. I know you're relatively new on this seat. I think you sit here. I think you took my seat, something like that. Thank you. It's a new blood, new thinking, new viewing. No, I'm, I'm impressed, the way you guys are thinking, those options, some of those. Thank you.
Okay, great. Carrie, any thoughts?
I have a couple of comments, actually. And again, this is just that old broad, that's been here too long. The, effectively, there are answers to some of those questions that you raised. And at the end of the day, what it comes down to is the Parks and Rec Commission is going to make a recommendation, and the council's going to make the final decision. With regard to the felons, alcohol, tobacco, all that, I will tell you that when it was suggested that the new bridge, Folsom Light Crossing, be named after Johnny Cash, there were council members that, that disagreed because they said, they started to bring up all sorts of things. And I said, and I asked them, I said, please, please pay attention to what you may or may not say in the next five minutes, and I want you to understand that the Cash family is watching this meeting on television. They did not believe me. And I said, no, actually, they're watching this meeting on television. So choose your words carefully, gentlemen. So that is, that is something to keep in mind. And then we, as you know, we subsequently named the trail for Johnny Cash. So people's perceptions of what constitute bad behavior are going to be across the board. So that's something just to keep in mind. The, the City Council in 1996, that policy that was developed, was that facilities were not going to be named after live people. And the reason why the council put that policy in place is because there was a huge, ugly, 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 and very personal battle about the naming of, about the use of Jack Hip's name and about the use of naming the park in Intom station after Ernie Sheldon. It was very, very ugly, very, very public, and very, very personal. So as a result of that, because both of them were alive when that happened, that was the point at which the City Council said, we're going to, we're not going to do this again. So we're not going to name anything after somebody until they're dead. Then comes the library. Georgia Murray was still alive at the time, and there was a big rush because we, because there hadn't been any big public ugly battles in, you know, in many years because of the way the policy had been guided. So the decision was made to change that policy, break the policy, and hurry up, let's get the library named after Georgia while Georgia's still alive. That same theory continued with the naming of Economy Family Park. Let's get the park done. And Robert and Lorraine will probably attest to the fact that we had the naming of the park sooner than Parks and Rec staff wanted to, and that was because George Economy, George Economy was ill. And we wanted to make sure that if we were going to do that, let's make sure George can physically attend. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of the history of where that kind of stuff came from. And I will assure you that there are names of people and, and events or whatever else is on that list that you guys have looked at, that have probably been on that list since maybe, Matt, before you were born. So there's going to be a lot of information that is going to make no sense to the current Parks Commissioners, but if you were to go back through the annals of the city's history, there are people in town that can probably tell you why those individuals are on that list. So just, it's just something to keep in mind because, you know, the, we don't necessarily need to reinvent the wheel, and I just wanted to provide some historical perspective. I appreciate the fact that you guys are bringing it forward. So, you know, great to have a conversation about it, but I just wanted to give the, the background as to how we got to where this is. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Sarah, comments?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you and commend you. We have an outstanding Parks and Recreation Commission. And as far as I know, you're the only commission that uses subcommittees. I suspect Will Kempton had something to do with that, but, but thank you. It's a very efficient way to do things. I wholeheartedly support your committee evaluating the policy and, and bringing back recommendations. The only one that I'll comment on specifically, I personally don't think someone needs to be deceased in order to have something named after them, but I do think there needs to be a waiting period. So for example, if somebody served on a city council or on a commission, I think 10 years, something like that, should pass before something is named after them. That's my personal preference.
Yeah, my only comment, Carrie beat me to it, which is the question about sort of the morals clause that you're considering for naming. I think that is super slippery and gets into San Francisco renaming their schools' territory really easily. So I, you know, everybody's view of, you know, drug, alcohol, redemption is different, right? So I would, I would be super cautious around that. And I want to commend you guys for, you know, taking a very close look at this and being thorough in your analysis. So I'll look forward to seeing you come back. Okay.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
It's on the second bullet. When it talked about tobacco, alcohol, and religion, what specifically does religion mean? Somebody who's, serves like in a religious capacity?
At the, at the time, and we were borrowing this, at the time, we, we reviewed a number of other cities and counties around the country. That was a consistent kind of theme that was in a lot of these, was that, that second bullet point. And I think it was more naming things after specific religions and having that in the title of it, not so much the background of the person.
Oh, good, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Should we open this for public comment? Is there anybody that would like to comment on this from the audience? Okay, hearing none. Bring it back here. So we don't need to take action on this. We're just asking the Parks Commission to continue with their work and bring us a recommendation back at some point in the future? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you may do so, or you can give direction to staff to refine or just let them run the survey, however you believe is going to be able to provide counsel or the commission and later, later the council with feedback from the community.
I don't, I don't think they're going to get feedback on the policy. I think you're going to get a whole nother list of names.
Be careful in the questions that you ask and trust staff and the commission to chase this down effectively.
So you're, you're comfortable with the public outreach process?
Of course.
And, and just so you know, Matt, the, the Parks and Rec Commission was never the one where the naming of bridges started. That was always at the council level. And I don't think we have any more bridges planned that I'm aware of, so. Because that got pretty ugly, too.
We'll have to deal with Caltrans on the next one. Okay. Next, let's call the next item, please.
All right. Your next item is New Business Item Number 13, Resolution Number 10609, a resolution ratifying submission of grant applications to the community project funding.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Dave Nigent, your Public Works Director. The item before you tonight is a ratification of a submission for the community project funding. It's essentially the resurrection of the earmark program coming out of the federal government. In March, we received notification that this program was making its way, and we were asked to submit projects prior to be able to come to you with a list of priority projects. So our, our position was, we went back to the list we generated for our SADCOG applications, and we looked at those projects, which ones met the criteria of the program, and we submitted those three projects, those being the Intelligent Transportation Master Plan, the Riley Street Sidewalks Project, which we included as part of the Active Transportation Program Grant, as well as the US 50 Empire Ranch Road Interchange. So we're just asking your concurrence on our submissions, and that is the item.
Great projects. Good choice.
Questions or comments?
No questions.
Good, good. Good, good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Or do we need, we'll have public comment. I'll entertain a motion, or do we need, we'll have public comment.
We have no request to speak.
One-time call for comments from the audience?
Well, and he already submitted them anyway, so it's kinda...
Nonetheless.
I will move adoption of resolution 10609.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
And that takes us to our last item of the evening, item number 14. This is new business license certificate administration and direction to staff regarding potential waiver of business license certificate fees for fiscal year 2122.
Okay. Stacy Tumani, CFO. Just have a short presentation for you tonight regarding business licenses. We're happy to announce that the city manager has approved and executed a contract with HDL companies to take over the administration of our business license certificate program. They'll be administering the entire program, including applications, renewals, payments, taxpayer support. They'll be providing us with a new software platform and doing all of the mail handling. They use the latest technology and best practices and have a good record of great customer service. Our staff has been really impressed with the process so far and all interactions that we've had with them, so we think our customers will be really happy with this change as well.
Because some of us were not happy with the other company, as the finance department well knows.
HDL comes equipped with additional functionality that we haven't had before for both city staff and the business community, and that should also be a very welcome upgrade in the service levels. Our process every year for business licenses starts with our annual renewal notices, and those will be mailed beginning on May 30th. So this new system and the new administrator will be in place and implemented before that time so we can have a seamless renewal period for our customers. And then on a related note, last year, as part of emergency order DES 0420, you approved the suspension of fees for renewals on home occupation business license certificates, and that's in effect until the termination of the COVID-19 public health emergency. Businesses that qualified for fee suspension under that order were still able to go ahead and renew their license and receive their certificate, but they didn't have to pay the city license fee. We only require them to pay the $4 disability access and education fund fee that's mandated by the state. So tonight, what we're asking for is your direction on any further desire to waive fees for the upcoming fiscal year 2122 renewal period, possibly for a larger segment of our business community. Right now, that emergency order only covers the home occupation licenses, and so all others would be required to pay during the renewal period. If you are interested in extending this waiver of fees to other business categories, then what we would like to receive from you tonight are any guidelines or parameters on who might be eligible to receive a waiver. Different thresholds would result in different impacts on general fund revenues, and any reduction in revenue would require a use of general fund balance in the upcoming fiscal year. And I just have one slide here so that you can see a couple of options. If you did decide to waive all fees for all businesses, it'd be an impact on the general fund balance of about $750,000 to $800,000, and that's in the form of lost revenue. And it would assist 4,700 plus, just depending on how many businesses we have apply next year. If you decided to limit the waiver and apply it to businesses whose total calculated license fees are $600 or lower, we would still have about 80 customers that would be above that threshold and be required to pay. Revenue would be reduced by about $500,000 to $550,000, and you'd be able to assist about 4,600 businesses. Third example is if you decided to limit the waiver and apply it to businesses whose license fees are $350 or lower, we would have about 200 customers that would still be required to pay. You would reduce revenue to the general fund by about $450,000 and still assist about 4,500 customers. Annual savings for businesses would be about $110. Some are paying $40 plus the $4 mandated fee, and some are up at the $600 level, and of course, all the way up to the top. So just depend on where you decided to draw the line, if you did do it. So what staff is asking for tonight is first, whether or not you're interested in extending a fee waiver to other business categories, and if so, do you want to impose a cutoff for eligibility, and if so, what would be that cutoff? Just have a couple of other notes. We do have two fees. I already mentioned the state mandated $4 disability access education fund fee. This applies to every business. Last year, when we did the home occupation licenses, we still required them to pay that $4 fee, so that would be something you would need to consider if you wanted to cover that ourselves. We would still be required to remit that to the state, or you could just do what we did and have a customer pay the $4 and receive their certificate. The other fee that you have is the $60 historic district surtax. This is for businesses on Sutter Street, Traders Lane, and Gold Lake Drive. Last year, we collected about $5,600 because of this fee, and this is specifically for maintenance in the historic district. Right now, it's being used for the city to cover the cost for utilities in the area, and then any remainder is remitted to the Sutter Street Merchants Association to be spent on further maintenance costs. So that's something to consider. Would you want to also waive that $60 fee? Go ahead and cover the costs with the general fund and, and remit an amount to the Merchants Association as well. So those are additional items that we would like some direction on.
Okay. Questions first. YK?
Sure. Ma'am, if someone wants to pay $350 as a fee, what kind of businesses are they, and what would be their revenue usually?
It does depend on what kind of business they are. I can go through a couple here and let you know. There's restaurants that meet that level, lots of restaurants, actually. There would be salons. The $350 level is, let me see here, would be up to about $5 million in gross receipts for most businesses. So there's, there's a lot that, that fall into that category. And as you can see, you know, 600 only left 80, 80 businesses at the top, but those businesses are, are biggest businesses in the city.
Gotcha. Okay. If one makes $5 million close to, then they pay around $350 as a fee.
Yeah, they're, that's, that's what they're paying.
Something like that. Okay.
The way, the way I look at it, these are fairly nominal amounts. I'm not really sure why we did this only for home businesses last year. And I think that most home businesses were probably hurt less than larger businesses during all of this, and I frankly don't think that it's fair that we're giving just the home-based businesses a break and nobody else is getting a break. So I say, and I don't want to take the hit and give it to everybody, so I say, everybody pays. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Thought you were going somewhere else with that comment.
Sorry.
So you're not saying give the break to everyone, you're saying nobody should get it?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I know, maybe, I'm new. I think you guys done some review and evaluation last year and approved this.
Not on this specific topic, just home-based businesses. We suspended their license fees.
And these are home-based, though?
This would include home-based, but this is everybody.
Home-based businesses typically are paying $40 a year.
So Mayor, are we, are we at questions right now, or can we comment?
Questions right now. We should actually open this for public comment, and then we can bring it back and continue the discussion. So do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I have a comment, but I have no question.
Okay.
The additional $4 disability fee, is that reflected in these impact on general fund revenues, or that would be on top of these?
That's included.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
So last time, it is only $65 kind of businesses be waived, right? I just want to make sure.
Can you just say that again?
Home-based businesses, what Carrie mentioned is...
$40.
$40 plus the $4 fee, typically.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right. Let's open this for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this? Okay, hearing none. Now, share your opinions. YK?
So the previous ones were question, yeah, right. See, these are the things is going to help me when I read that manual.
Sure, 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 sure.
The numbers seeing, I know last time, we did waive only $40-ish, and I know those are a big numbers to come here. Any research you guys have done, or any information you have supporting, or it is just a recommendation here? That kind of waiver?
It's not a recommendation. She's just giving us the data.
Yeah.
So we can make the suggestion, so we can make a decision.
There's, there's some time sensitivity to making this decision because the new vendor is taking over on the licenses, and they need to be, they need to send out billing for these things soon. So there was just the question of, did we want to extend some of these abatements that we did for others last year and expand that pool? So that's why, that's why this came up.
No, I totally understand the fact of urgency, right? What, I mean, it's not urgency, it's around the time.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, what I'm looking for, a little bit more information, that's all, that's why. You know, last year, you know, how much was the waiver fee we, we forego by waiving the home businesses?
It was less than $100,000.
Less than, okay.
Rosario?
So my thoughts are, not everybody was impacted by, by COVID. Some businesses actually benefited from, were able to, you know, have better revenue, and others really struggled, the restaurant industry, the retail industry, and a few others. And so, you know, I think even going specific to a certain industry that was impacted, maybe, you know, I think they would probably appreciate the, the waiver of the fee, but I, I don't support giving it to all, because there were many industries that, you know, the construction industry, they're booming. I mean, there are so many other industries that are, that have just been positively, positively impacted. So, I don't know, industry-specific, maybe? I don't know.
Is there a mechanism for us to be able to do that?
Yeah.
If not, then everybody pay.
We could do that. The way that we collected is, you're either general or you're in a different category. So many general retail stores, restaurants, but then also salons, but then also other retail stores that did really well, would all be in the same category.
Gotcha.
Yeah, like it didn't, it wasn't awful to be Costco last year, or frankly, any grocery store.
Well, that's why you could restrict it to...
Well, that's why the top 80 are potentially sliced off in that second category.
So we had a presentation earlier from Congressman Bera. Over the next two years, the city's going to be getting $15.3 million in COVID relief. I would hope that my colleagues agree that a significant portion of that should go to assist the business community. Stacy, in one of Congressman Bera's slides, there was a bullet point that talked about the uses of that money, the approved uses, and it said, responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency, or the negative economic impacts. So the question is, can a portion of that 15 million go towards something like this?
Right now, the guidance that we're getting is it, it could go directly to the businesses, but not as a reduction in taxes for the general fund that then we fill or backfill with that money.
But we could take it from our fund balance.
Correct.
And that money can be used to make up for a lost revenue from the city.
Correct.
And, and the good news, question mark, is that we have plenty of expenses to apply that other funding to that need to be backfilled in the general fund, just for other purposes. Okay, so I, I think, I think both Carrie and Rosario brought up the, the really operative question here is, in the effort to help some businesses who were harmed in what is a, a small way, right? May end up benefiting some businesses that were enriched by the situation. And that's always a problem with tax cuts and, you know, just sort of revenue generating and tax measures that all governments have to deal with. So I, I, I'm of a mind that, you know, taking one of these tiers and applying it takes away the largest businesses where the fee is so nominal that, to be almost irrelevant to their operation. So maybe that, you know, everybody who pays under $600 takes away the very large businesses in town.
And I could probably live with that, because the, you know, the, to a lot of businesses, the $300, $350 is not, it's not hugely significant, but you feel that, you feel that check when you write it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
If you're intel and you're writing a check for, you know, $5,000, they don't feel that check.
Right.
But other people do, so.
So I'm, I'm going to move that we waive the upcoming business certificate fee for any business with a fee less than $600.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to give advice to waive the fees up to $600.
Including the $4 fee.
Including the, and what about the $60 fee if they happen to be on those three streets in the historic district?
Yes.
And then cover the costs from the general fund to the Merchants Association, like an average amount that we've paid them the past three years after paying utilities, or how would you...
Do I need to do this in multiple motions? Do people have very... Let's start with this one. I will move to waive the business certificate fee for any business paying less than $600 a year, and also, we will cover the $4 disability fee. Let's, let's start with that motion.
You accept that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for that particular item.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Just a quick clarification. So we are giving a waiver for 4,620 businesses.
Give or take, yes.
Approximately, in full sometimes, more or less. Wow. Okay, yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, do we have an additional motion to address the historic district?
Okay, and then I will move to waive the $60 fee that applies to those certain streets in the historic district.
Okay.
And cover it from fund balance.
Okay.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the subsequent, second motion.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, great. City manager report.
All right, good evening, everyone. The city of Folsom owns the space on the ground floor of the parking garage located at 905 Liedersdorf Street in the historic district. The 3,700 square foot space is currently unoccupied and zoned HD for commercial uses. The Folsom City Council has asked for community input as to possible future uses for the space. Interested stakeholders are invited to attend a virtual workshop that I will be facilitating from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. this Thursday, April 15th. To learn more about the property, ask questions, and to provide ideas and input, visit the city of Folsom website for more details and to register for the virtual workshop. You can also provide your comments and ideas through an online questionnaire or by email. The deadline to respond is April 23rd, and you can learn more at www.folsom.ca.us. The 7th Annual Love My Mom 5K takes place Sunday, May 2nd. This popular event returns this year with both virtual and in-person options. Registration is limited to 300 runners for the in-person option and 200 runners for the virtual option. Kids can also take place in a half-mile run. The in-person 5K course takes place at the Pilates Mall, and the race starts and finishes in the Whole Foods parking lot. Please visit our website to learn more. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and the city of Folsom is honoring the outstanding men and women who answer 911 emergency calls and dispatch police, fire, and paramedic personnel to provide lifesaving assistance. As the first point of contact for 911 or non-emergency calls, Folsom Police Department dispatchers answered more than 94,000 calls last year and dispatched officers to more than 40,300 calls for service. So thank you to those amazing public servants. And finally, last week, the Folsom Fire Department awarded local resident, nine-year-old Emma with a Hometown Hero Award for her bravery while helping a family member with a medical emergency. She was able to tell the dispatchers her address, open the door for the firefighters, and tell the paramedics what had happened. Acting Captain Roy Griffith presented Emma with a Hometown Hero Award for showing courage and compassion while supporting the community. I gave her a special pin, and Fire Chief Ken Casano gave Emma a challenge coin, and the Folsom Firefighters Association gifted her with a personal gift card to get ice cream with her family. Thank you to wonderful Emma, and that's all I have.
That's great. Okay, council comments. YK, anything?
Yes, sir. I know more businesses are opening, and, you know, it's a yay, good news, and I know probably still pay the close attention to the, the work I am trying to do is reaching out to the businesses and requesting them, please have those hand sanitizers, you know, please have those hand sanitizers, you know, for a joke, in the restaurants, you know, salt, pepper, hand sanitizer. Hand sanitizer for not consumption, but still, it is important, so.
Actually, salt and pepper is frowned on right now.
If you could come up with a salt and pepper hand sanitizer, you got it all covered.
Salt and pepper sanitizer. No, a salt and pepper sanitizer.
So, yeah, that's going on, and I requested, you know, our Parks and Rec team. It has been four months since we have done, three months since we have done the hand sanitizer distribution. Now more people are going out. Maybe this is one more last push to bring those, you know, numbers down. That's a good one. And the other one is, I think I'm almost done touring all departments.
Excellent.
Almost, except, you know, one aisle in City Hall like Krista's office and, you know, our Steve's office. I learned quite a bit. I think this is one of those, when you guys were putting the governance manual, it is helping me right away. Knowing what I can do, what, you know, I got to be a little bit cautious, it's going to be a huge help. With that, again, Folsom, please be safe, and I know the numbers are up and down. Our chief, Casano, is here, but always be safe and, you know, kill that bug COVID. Thank you and good evening.
Very good. Rosario?
Okay, well, I continue to do my rounds with the city departments. Thank you, Krista, for the overview of the clerk's office. It was very informative. Thank you also to Lorraine Pejoni for sitting down with me to talk about Parks and Rec. One of the things that I said was show me Folsom's greatest jewel with Parks and Recs, and we got to talking and never got to our destination, so it was very good. We had a really good conversation. And also to Pam Johns for meeting with me on community development. This is an area that I continue to always seek advice and really have to work really hard to understand. So I sat down with Scott Johnson, Steve Kron, Scott Zan, Grandjo, and Pam Johnson, had a very good conversation, and it was very educational. I did my second ride-along with Folsom Police Department on the current state of our homelessness, and went, Laura Baskis, our Folsom Navigator, run along. And we think it's very evident that we do have some just deep issues within our trails. Also joined the CERT team back on March 27th with a group of volunteers of CERT, about 20 of them and about 10 volunteers to what was originally meant to clean up an abandoned camp, but then three areas were escalated due to the fire risk. And it just shows some of, if you leave things, if you don't attend to the issues, they will grow and it will get exasperated and the problem will continue to show. And I think this is where residents continue to call, saying, please do something about this problem. So that was good. I took Advil. I think I'm still taking Advil from that, from helping that day, but it was good. I had my first introductory meeting with the CEO of the Sacramento Steps Forward. And for anyone who doesn't know, this is an appointed council of elected officials that provides strategic leadership on Sacramento's response to the crisis of homelessness. The first meeting will be in a couple of weeks, so I'm looking forward to that. You know, one of the things that I continue to say is homelessness, I think, is a byproduct of one of the major issues, and that is substance abuse. I think that is an area that really is, when we look at nine out of 10 people who are homeless suffer from some form of addiction, and so I'd love to see attention put onto that. As I continue to talk to Folsom residents and different entities on the issue of homelessness, you know, Sergeant Aaron Zalaya is just very good and informative about giving information of what's going on. The navigator is great. We have people from Heart of Folsom and residents. And something that was very evident was nobody talks to anybody. There was a lot of confusion that came out of the cleanup on March 27th. So brought people together, had coffee, and it was very good, very informative. I think people weren't talking to each other. There was a lot of miscommunication. So from there, as one of the members had, one of the people that spoke had mentioned that we have these bi-weekly meetings, which I think will be good. Basically, we all have a concerted effort to do something about this issue. And for me, as I shared with them, you know, when we look at crisis that happens in our community, chaplains are in around. And so my, you know, advice to this group was I'd love to see a chaplain be a part of this homelessness. I think they are able to talk to people and over, you know, just to get some of the issues that they're dealing with, start talking about them and get some action going on there, but otherwise, that's it.
Excellent, thank you. Carrie?
RT board meeting was last night. Things are, all things are going well with RT. Elk Grove, basically, the board approved the annexation of Elk Grove into RT last night.
Great.
So I think that's going to be really good for everybody in the region. It's going to make transportation from one part of the region to the other, I think, a lot more seamless than it has been up to this point. So I think that's a good thing. Things are also going well at Regional SAN. We have a board meeting tomorrow morning, so if anything earth-shattering comes back from that, I will let you know. The, you know, the expansion of the plant continues to move forward, and they, on time and for the most part, under budget, which is a really good thing because that affects all of our rates with regionals, that portion of the bill that we pay through, through our city utility bill. Things are moving on with the connector. I believe we got construction going on, Dave? Yep, construction is always a good thing. Any idea when that light's going to be installed at the end of East Bidwell? Do I have to call Derek Minma again? Okay, I will.
Let the record show that Dave Nugent is nodding. He does not know, side to side.
No, so I'm going to call the director of the Southeast Connector and find out when that signal is going to be installed at White Rock in East Bidwell.
Very good.
And the speeding and the red light running and all of that continues rampantly. There has been, I've seen in the last several days, there has been a pretty big police department presence everywhere. Thank you to everybody in Folsom PD, and I know you guys have been super busy this week. So stay safe out there, and the rest of you that are driving like idiots, please stop it.
Good advice. Sarah?
I just have a quick email to share from a resident that says, "Dear Sarah, Dave Nugent and Ryan Chance of the City of Folsom Public Works Department met with our board members today, and we are so grateful. They were the nicest guys and provided us excellent advice. I can't express how impressed we were with their professionalism and willingness to meet with us. Sarah, would you please commend them at a council meeting and let the council know how much our senior community, Diamond Glenn, appreciates their consideration of us?" So, thank you very much, and once again, happy birthday to Chief Casano. Sorry we kept you so late.
That's great. All right, well, just a couple of quick things. I was asked as our representative on SECOG to also sit on the Mega Region Committee, which is four of us from SECOG and four people from the Bay Area COG and four from San Joaquin COG. And we had an extraordinarily complex conversation about where we should direct our attention in that whole big wide world. But the.
Folsom.
Yeah, the end result was that it should all flow to Folsom. No, no. We, basically, we landed on the best use of our time collectively is to work on improvements to the 580 corridor, the 99 and Highway 5 corridor, and the 80 corridor, which roughly forms a triangle to connect the three parts, the three main centers of the region. So not a big surprise there, but it was a stimulating conversation about something that seems obvious but requires a lot of cooperation from everybody. My second thing is that when we have our next SECOG meeting, on the table will be a recommendation from the staff at SECOG for how to distribute the roughly $200 million that SECOG gets to distribute this year. And while we're giving accolades to Dave Nugent, I wanted to extend that to Dave and to Mark Rackavan and all of the staff in Public Works for being instrumental in helping adjust the process at SECOG for how projects are selected for funding. We had wanted and have wanted for a long time to have it be more formulaic so that we could predict what was going to get funded. Even if it was a little less money, knowing what you're going to get makes it a lot easier to plan capital projects that may take a decade to get onto the ground. We didn't achieve that fully, but we did achieve the ability for communities to prioritize the projects that they submit for funding. And the happy result of that is that the top projects that Folsom submitted, one for Highway 50, one ITC project, and then our Central Business District Improvement Study, all were fully funded. And then we got partial funding for the Empire Ranch Interchange, which will be very helpful getting us matching funds from other sources. So I want to commend you guys for doing that work. And unless there is some really unusual conversation at that next SECOG meeting, I suspect the board will ratify that because the change of formulation of how projects are selected for funding actually ended up satisfying almost everybody's priority projects, so good result there. And then I want to thank Carrie. I didn't realize that the Elk Grove thing had happened last night. That, again, as we're talking about transportation funding, that is a huge, gives a huge advantage to RT, the getting more territory into a single regional entity for claiming federal funding and other types of funding. And to our staff here in Folsom, Carrie and previous council, for getting that ball rolling by integrating Folsom's transportation with RT. We're the ones that were the, you know, impetus for these other communities joining up. So, great work, thank you.
It's something that Elk Grove had been thinking about, but they didn't, you know, through years of watching trouble at RT, they were just, they were very, very hesitant to put their eggs in that basket at night. So I tried very hard to explain to them that, you know, we were hesitant for a lot, a long time for a lot of the same reasons, but that things had gone very smoothly. We had very, very few issues with RT. You know, probably one of the larger ones is that people were complaining that the buses weren't as clean.
Wow.
I think it just.
We have very high standards.
A transformation under Henry Lee's leadership, it made us all feel much more comfortable about moving that direction.
Hundred percent. So I just want to, proper accolades to everybody here in Folsom that worked on the integration of our transport into RT because it is the linchpin that has kicked off this other steam stuff that's going to end up bringing more funding to.
The region.
The region for transportation. So it's good all the way around. And then I will close just by saying, or reiterating something that Congressman Bera basically told us, which is, things are getting better. There is a light at the end of the tunnel. But it's not time to disregard social distancing, and it's not time to drop our masks or our guard yet. Be careful, be with your family, get vaccinated. And with that, I will close our meeting at 9:11 p.m. Thank you.